Tonight's city council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and our first order of business tonight is our invocation, our pledge. So I think we have Dr. Jeff Mitchell from the LDS Church here with us tonight. Dr. Jeff, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our dear Father in heaven, we thank you so much to be here this evening. We are grateful for this opportunity to meet together and to discuss the matters at hand. We are thankful for those individuals that have come and shared their time with us and grateful for these elected officials. We ask thee to bless us with thy spirit this night, that we might be able to discuss things openly and freely, but with thy spirit to direct us in a calm and orderly fashion. We are thankful for all that thou has done for us, for our health, for our strength, for our beautiful land that we get to live in, grateful for the moisture that we've received. I ask thee to continue to bless the land as thou seeest fit. We ask for these things in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge?
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no end, decree.
This one's mine, right Bob? If that was mine, okay. I know he brought it from me.
Well, it was Paul. I didn't check for it. Well, that's not mine.
This is for what? Okay. 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 All right. Let Gloria get back to her seat.
Sorry.
Gloria, let the roll call show that all council members are present.
So noted.
Next item is item C.
Mayor McFarland, we move that we approve the minutes of the council regular meeting of January 16th, 2024, and also the acceptance of the minutes of the Historic Preservation Commission's regular meeting, October 23rd, 23.
Second.
All right, a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the minutes are approved. Next is item D, claims against the city.
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated January 10th, 2024 through January 30th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Our meeting agenda approval.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council member, just a couple of quick items for the benefit of the individuals that are here this evening related to our council agenda. We do have two executive sessions that are scheduled for this evening. The first is, in essence, specifically focused and available to the mayor and council to seek legal advice from our city attorney on the item, the hearing that you will be considering this evening. Given the number of individuals that are in the room, Mr. Mayor, if the mayor and council elect to convene into an executive session, it's probably best that we just move to the conference room upstairs. It may make it a bit easier for us logistically. The second executive session, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that we hold at the end of the meeting, so you may want to move your reports in advance of that particular item.
In advance of the second executive session. All right, any other changes? Adjustments? Okay, then I will, I will move the reports, item N, to just before item M. Okay. Any other changes, council?
None. Mayor McFarland, I move to approve the meeting agenda as amended.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Meeting agenda is approved. Next item is our item G's, which is the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion, one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Anyone on council want to remove anything from the consent agenda?
No.
Staff? All right, public? That's you all.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbon?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. Okay. Next is our public comments section. So we have a public hearing tonight, which is item L1, and we also have the public comments section. I would encourage those who are here to speak on L1 to wait for the public hearing, and all other matters that are not agendized, this is the opportunity for the public to address council. So this is, this is under item H. And I do have some folks here, I wanted to make sure that you all are not here to speak about item L1. If you are, I'll put you in the L1 pile versus the public speaking pile. So Connie Gamas? Would you like to, I'm going to open the floor, so this is the, the public comments section. Did you wish to speak? No? Okay, are you, okay. How about Maria Cardenas?
No.
Okay. Naomi?
Costales.
Costales?
I do, but I was going to wait until Ricky.
If you, are you here for item, what item are you here for?
Public comment.
But just public comment?
Yes.
Okay.
They want Ricky to speak first.
Don't make him speak first.
Oh Ricky?
Yeah.
That's Billy.
Oh, Richard.
Cardenas.
Okay, Richard, you want to speak first? You kind of set the table then.
Hi, I'm here to speak on a-
I'm sorry, don't stop, start his timer yet. So just to remind everybody, this is a public comments, and it is not an agendized item, so therefore we cannot comment on it. And, you know, please keep your comments to three minutes, and also if it's already been said, doesn't necessarily need to be said again, you can come up and agree with the person, and, but we don't, you know, just say, okay, it's, yeah, name and address, please, for the records.
My name is Richard Cardenas, my address is 1129 East Fourth Street.
Go ahead, Richard.
We've been having a problem with this house in the corner, actually right across the street from me, and we've been having shootings, and I'm pretty sure some of you are aware of that. We've had like seven in the last two and a half weeks, and this lady that's here, her car was actually shot twice, and it's just out of hand, and we want to know if, we've seen some action taken by the city already, where they've gone and cleaned the house, and they've put condemned signs, but the neighbor here said that the lady that's owns the property was just let out of the hospital, so she's back. So I'm pretty sure she's going to go back inside the house, which was condemned, already have stickers all over it. And with that, everybody else that's been ran off is going to come back into that house, and one of the officers also said that, once, she can't, she can't go back into the house because it's supposed to be fenced off, but since it's not fenced off yet, they're going to end up back in the house because there's already people in there when they're not supposed to be. I called the police earlier, but, and they said she couldn't live in the house anymore, but she was, she would be able to live on the property because they can't kick her off the property. So I go, it doesn't make sense, you guys are tearing down the tents that are already back here, saying it's city ordinance, they can't have them, but yet you guys are going to let her stay back there in a tent, so it doesn't make any sense. So the shootings is the most concern we have, I haven't, I'm one that hasn't been able to sleep at night because just waiting for gunshots to go off, and it's so close to us. And then even a couple of weeks ago on a Monday, they did a drive-by, and I was late going to work because they set up a crime scene, and it's been crazy, and then they're out there in the front doing drugs, and one of the neighbors even saw, saw them having sex outside, and his kids are out there playing, his twin girls. So, and we called the police, but by the time they get there, it's, everybody's gone and stuff, so it's just concerns because I don't want something to happen to one of the neighbors, and then we end up doing something, we're the ones that are going to get in trouble, while these guys get to go out and shoot and do whatever, and no consequences. So I just want to make sure that, and even like, just simple going outside and having a cookout or going out and clean, a lot of us go outside with our guns because we never know. And last summer I had one of them try to get into my house at five o'clock in the morning. So I was on the phone with 911, and this person kept on and kept on with the door handle trying to get in, so I'm like, you know what, I'm done. I hit the door and I pointed my gun at him, and they took off running. Well, when I went to the front door, the police was already there, you know, so luckily they were there. So, but I just, that's what my concerns were.
All right, thank you, Richard. Naomi?
Yes. My name is Naomi Costales, I live at 1121 East Fourth Street. For the last 60 years I have lived there, it's been my home, and now we're not even comfortable. I want to stay there until my time is up, but these people are going to run us off. We call and call, we call different agencies, nothing can be done, we call the health department, nothing, until we started smelling buckets, feces in the alley. That's where the drug use, so it's bad, it's really bad. My neighbor has a set of twins, seven-year-old twins, that play out there all the time. And then my neighbor's car got shot. Who's going to pay the $500 deductible to get her car fixed? And I just want, I want myself to demolish the house. It's a target, it's a magnet, they just won't go away. That, they went in Friday, by Saturday night they were all back in, they opened the window, and they went into the house, which is unlivable. It's condemned. It's got orange signs all over, they still go in there. And I was told the police are going to be going by and given arresting, well, it hasn't happened, I guess they don't go in the middle of the night, but there are people there already. So there's a car there, we don't even know who it belongs to, which I guess I can call in the morning and maybe tow it out, tow it off, but there's just so much, so many things going on, too many things to mention. I should have brought my list that I had, but we not, we would like for the house to be knocked down and just demolished. It's like, like I said, I repeat myself, it's a magnet, they just keep coming back. And that's my gripe, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, William Costales. That was my mother who just spoke. I grew up with Anthony Edwards. We grew up in that neighborhood. This house, let me give you a little background. We've been selling dope out of the house for three, four years. We, but we just kind of like, let you be you, do whatever, and they got continually worse. Now, after all these years, it's getting, it's getting to the point when I go clean her yard, I got a gun in my pocket. I found hypodermic needles, crack pipes, in her yard. She don't want to move, and I don't think she has to. This house is, like she said, a magnet. It's, there's violence there, she's had a, one girl OD'd in her driveway, she's had, I seen a guy hitting himself in the head till he started bleeding. I myself have been out there and just looking around and had been somewhat, what'd you call it, accosted? But it gets my better judgment, I just kind of stood my ground. But I'm, I'm kind of done, and most of the neighborhood is too. There should be something done. The house is burnt out, it doesn't have utilities, there's, there's no roof. Just by leaving it alone like this, nothing's going to change. We're here to ask you to bring it to your attention that this needs to stop. This is a danger to the community. Anthony's parents live behind this house. I could just think about it, if some of them bullets head towards his mom and dad's house, or mine. Unfortunately, this is about all we can do. But I'm hoping that this stays on topic, and somebody really looks at this, because first of all, you're using a hell of a lot of police manpower just sitting there waiting, chewing them off. This house is condemned. It's, it should be torn down. Or maybe it'll catch fire mysteriously, who knows? But something needs to happen. Thanks.
I heard nothing. Carmen Flores? Okay.
Good evening, my name's Ignacio Ochoa. I live at 1127 East Fourth Street for the last 20 years. I live right across the street from that house, and I see all the drug dealing, all the trash, all the noise, they keep me up at hours of the night, wake me up, when I got to get up early in the morning at four o'clock, three o'clock in the morning to go to work in Phoenix. And I'm with my neighbors here, we're tired of it. We need this house cleaned up, torn down, or, what my neighbor said earlier, I'm not going to repeat it, but, it needs, something needs to be done. My kids, my twins can't go outside and ride their bikes because there's all kinds of drug addicts out there, we don't know what's going on, what kind of pedophiles or what's going on in that house. They're in and out at all hours of the night, and we would like to put a stop to this. If someone cares or is listening to us, we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last speaker card I have is Nancy Wood.
Good evening, thank you. I'll try and make this real quick. Nancy Wood, 513 East Bechel Road, Casco Grande, Arizona. I just wanted to give a quick shout out to, I know a lot of what's going on tonight is about our development, and things that are going on Casco Grande, and, and things like that, and I've been up before about our burrowing owls in our town, and I wanted to, to give a shout out, thank you that one of the developers on Pablo and McNeil did the right thing and get the biologist involved, and was able to save over half a dozen owls before they started their project, and, you know, they're getting their ground going, and, and the improvements that we're going to get in the city, and things like that. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out that I appreciate when the developers do that, and I hope that with all the changes that are going on and the new development, that anyone that's doing work, you know, whether it's residential or developers or whatever, look out for the owls, because I know we had a recent incident where somebody didn't, and we may have lost some. So just, you know, hopefully we look out for our community, and the people that live here that have been here a long time, and respect that, and try and deal with all these changes that we have coming up, and look out for the critters and the people. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now, just because you didn't fill out a public comment card, if you, if you do have something you want to address the council with, I will allow you to come up if you didn't fill out a card. So, is there anybody else who would like to address the council on, on any other matters? All right, well, seeing none, then I'm going to close the public comments and, and ask that Larry would get with these folks, and I know that we have information on it, I know police do too, that's not acceptable. But we also need to follow the law with regard to how those things are handled, so maybe somebody could explain to them the process that needs to go through, because I know we've done it before. So, thank you all. All right, I'm going to close the public comments then, and we'll move to, actually, our first and only item on the agenda. This is a public hearing, considering approval or denial of a major site plan for the lofts at G Diamond. It's a 120-unit multifamily development located on approximately 10.2 acres in the G Diamond planned area development, parcel H. So, the process will be that we're going to allow the staff to give a report, and then we'll hand it to the applicant to give any further explanations or, or comments that they might have, and then we'll open the floor to the public. So that's kind of how we're going to do it, and then before we do open to the public, I have a few instructions that I want to give out, but we'll cover it when we're ready for that. So, staff, Mr. Dice, or Jessica?
Jacqueline.
Jacqueline?
Good evening, Mayor.
Sorry, Jacqueline. It was that lump I took on my head the other day.
This is an administrative review of the Planning Commission's denial of the major site plan for the lofts at G Diamond, parcel H, major site plan. As noted, this is approximately 10 acres in G Diamond, located at the southeast corner of Cortson and Colorado. The site has been zoned for medium-density multifamily development up to 12 units, 12 dwelling units per acre since the inception of the G Diamond Ranch PAD in 2003. The PAD amendment in 2007 changed the acreage of the site and added additional height restrictions to two stories. Oops, there we go. And then the proposed development, as noted, is for 120-unit two-story multifamily development with proposed density of 11.76 dwelling units per acre and proposed height of 23 feet 10 inches, meeting the requirements of the PAD. Here's the major site plan review criteria. Staff reviews based on requirements addressed in, in the zoning ordinance. Staff, the staff report goes into additional detail on all these, however, tonight I will be focusing on the performance with city's general plan with regards to compatibility and landscaping, as well as traffic, as these were the main concerns from adjacent neighbors and property owners at the planning commission meetings. So the site, with, is within the neighborhood's land use general, land use category. Here are some of the development standards that are addressed in the general plan. I wanted to focus on, on number one and four, one being that new development shall be designed to minimize adverse impacts upon surrounding existing land uses, and that used-to-use compatibility between single-family residential, multifamily residential, and non-residential development shall be achieved through the use of increased building setbacks, landscaping buffers, building height limits, and building setbacks, setbacks. So as noted, one of the concerns was the land use compatibility between the neighborhoods to the south and west of the site. Additional landscaping is being utilized to provide additional screening. First image on the left shows the landscaping at time of planting, and I also wanted to note that there are additional setbacks along the southern border, ranging from 25, 35 feet, and that the proposed landscaping trees would be 24-inch box red oak, and at maturity be 30 to 40 feet in height. Here is the landscaping with mature trees. I also wanted to note that there is also 100-foot open space tract that's owned by the city as part of the master plan area for the community rec center, where additional landscaping in this area is anticipated in the future by the city. And looking at compatibility to the west, there is approximately 100 feet between the parcel and the G Diamond Ranch neighborhood to the west, with Colorado Street acting as an additional barrier between the sites. I want, also wanted to note that the applicant has updated the initial site plan after the neighborhood meeting. The land, the site plan on the left shows the initial layout with buildings more orientated east and west, and at the minimum setback requirements. The site plan on the right shows the newly laid out design that addresses the Balkan scale of the buildings. Here are the proposed elevations. Again, they're two-story low profile at 23 feet 11 inches, approximately four inches, four feet lower than the maximum height of 28 feet. And I also wanted to note that the architecture complements the adjacent rec center as well. With regards to traffic, a traffic impact statement was prepared for this project due to projected traffic analysis being below 100 peak hour trips. Based on comments at the October Planning Commission meeting, the commission requested additional analysis at the intersections of Colorado and Cortson, and Cortson and Peert. This analysis was completed in October and presented at the December Planning Commission meeting. Since then, the applicant also completed additional traffic analysis for tonight's meeting that was taken on Tuesday, January 9th, with slightly different numbers than the original analysis completed in October. Some of the updated findings showed that the intersection of Cortson and Colorado currently operate at adequate levels of service, and will continue to do so with additional traffic associated from this proposed development, and that the maximum queuing observed during the study period for eastbound Cortson and Peert was approximately 625 feet and included 25 vehicles. This occurred both in the AM and PM peak hours and cleared within one signal cycle. And then that certain movements at the Cortson and Peert intersection during peak hours currently operate on acceptable levels of service ENF, and with the proposed development will make slightly worse. However, adding a right turn lane at eastbound Cortson Road would bring all movements at the intersection to acceptable levels of D or better. There's also been a number of public comments that the intersection of Colorado and Cortson is the main entry point for G Diamond area, however, in the future, there will be different access points. The Red Diamond subdivision located west of Colorado would provide full improvements to O'Neal, where it currently terminates at Legacy School to Colorado, as well as half-street improvements from Colorado, where it terminates at Silver Reef, all the way to where it connects to Cottonwood. And these half-street improvements would be built to carry two-way traffic as well. The site east of Colorado has been recently amended for multifamily, and would provide O'Neal alignment from Colorado to Peert as well. And then there is also additional multifamily zone north of Cortson and Colorado, and with these improvements, improvements, or excuse me, with all this development, traffic signals are anticipated at Colorado and Cortson and O'Neal and Peert in the future as well. signals are anticipated at Colorado and Cortson and O'Neal and Peert in the future as well. Now, staff knows that this will not all be built tomorrow, and there's a lot of factors involved and in play. However, it is anticipated that these improvements would be done within the next five years or so. Regarding stakeholder efforts, there was, as noted, a neighborhood meeting in May at the community rec center. Notification was provided for all Planning Commission and City Council public hearings to all owners of property within 500 feet, as well as the G Diamond HOA management company. All comments received prior to publication of the agenda is part of the packet. There have been a few additional comments that you have received since then. Comments range, again, from property values, traffic, building setbacks, noise concerns, as well as aesthetics of the building. And there has also been comments regarding deed restrictions related to age restrictions and other development restrictions that have been removed by a previous owner. With that, so council, after this public hearing, have a few options, either to approve the major site plan request, deny the request to approve the major site plan, or council may also table the matter, however, that matter may be only tabled for two meetings. And should council approve the major site plan request, staff recommends the following conditions of approval. First one, associated with the final landscape plan and just making note that the additional plantings along the southern boundary is in order, as well as prior to certificate of occupancy, that the applicant shall construct an eastbound right turn on Cortson and Peert. And those improvements would be eligible for traffic impact fee offset reimbursements. That concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Questions?
Mr. Levener.
Yeah, Jacqueline, can you go back to the slide with adverse, I forget how you...
This one?
Minimize adverse impacts upon the surrounding existing land uses. Give us a definition of what that might mean.
Well, in this case, the applicant has, as noted, changed the orientation of the buildings to have less of a Balkan scale impact to the properties to the south. As you can see there, pushed further back from the initial site plan and oriented differently. And again, that they have included additional landscaping.
So you mentioned the 30 to 40-foot-high trees, correct? They're not going to be planted at that height, am I correct?
Correct. So this is the, would be the time of initial planting? And then at mature?
So do we have an idea what maturity, how many years that would look like?
I do not, but the applicant may be able to answer that.
Okay. And can you go to the, where you showed the map all the way to Cottonwood? The pad amendment that's in the red there with the yellow line, how many feet is that from the southern boundary of this development? You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, those are acre lots.
About 300 feet.
So what goes in between that yellow line and the southern property line there? Is that an easement or what is that?
So it's currently part of a, go back to the original. It is right now in the PAD low-density residential, however, that portion does not have certificates of assured water. So it would have to be amended to address that or wait till future changes with the certificates.
You could subdivide it five times. And not have water.
Yeah, it could be, it could...
Could be acre lots.
Yeah, it could be acre lots up to five.
If somebody wanted to.
Okay. And then you mentioned the deed was sold by the previous owner. Do you have dates on, do you have dates on when the deed was removed and when the new owner bought the property? Or is that something the applicant can answer?
I don't have that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, sir.
Yeah? Go ahead, Bob.
Jacqueline, can you go back to the list of recommendations from staff? And if you could, I don't want to be overly burdensome here, but could you just describe a little bit what one and two entails?
The conditions of approval?
Yes.
So the first one is just, it's already outlined in the preliminary landscape plan, but it's just noting that those requirements that they're putting in for the additional landscaping on the southern buffer is included in the final landscape plan.
Okay.
For the first one. And then the second one would be that the right turn, and I know the applicant has a presentation on this, right turn lane be added to, I don't have that.
Cortson.
Cortson and Peert.
Cortson, Peert, southbound.
Okay. And were these in response to citizen advising of problems with this plan?
Yes. So at the first meeting in October, with the traffic impact statement, there's not a lot of analysis that goes into that, that's done at a TIA level analysis. And so when it was tabled at the October meeting, they did additional analysis beyond a traffic impact statement, looking at these concerns that were brought up by the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, thank you. Lisa?
Question. So we did the original traffic impact study, and then an additional analysis was taken after there was concerns of traffic and especially from the citizens and neighbors. Why didn't we, and would it be beneficial, and at what point would it be beneficial, to do a signal study for the Colorado and Cortson interchange? Because it seems as though people have been concerned about turning left out of there, the queuing process, several accidents in that area. So I just didn't see that on there, so I was just curious, you know, why and what it takes to have the signal study.
May I answer this question?
Go ahead.
Yes. So for the signal request, it was never been discussed, but from the public works point of view, we are aware of this intersection, and this will not warrant, as per our judgment, signal at this time. But as the more development comes, more traffic grows, signal will warrant and that time will consider. We also have to consider that citywide, we have the priority of signalization for many other intersection, and this will certainly will not be the top on the priority list. But if signal is needed anytime, definitely we'll look into it. For this project's major concern was Cortson and Peert.
Right.
Though concern was raised for Colorado and Peert, previous study and subsequent study did not see that intersection of Colorado and Cortson has big issue.
Okay. So as there's more development, there will be a reason to...
Yes. Or as more development comes, signal will automatically be warranted, and it will be installed probably through the development agreement.
Okay. And then another question, I don't know, the diagram that has where the buildings are faced and they're diagonal, because I think that was one of the reasons you were getting input right here. Was it discussed to bring the parking on the south side of that to minimize, you know, just that buffer? And if so, or if not, you know, why? And I try to watch, you know, I watched some of the hearing, but I just don't remember if that was discussed.
I'll have the applicant address that if you don't mind.
Sure.
There were discussions, but I think it was just their preference.
Jacqueline, while you're on this graphic, are you done?
Yes.
I'm sorry. So it's 100 feet from their wall to the residence wall, right?
To the south.
Correct. So the city-owned tract is approximately 100 feet.
That's our walking path basically through there.
Yes. And then the buildings are set back between 25 and 35 feet from the parcel.
So it's 135 feet from the corner of the building to the wall, right?
Yes.
Oh, 125 for the short one. Okay.
Matt, I want to go along that same line of questioning, because maybe they can address it. Because I was just looking if he could flop the buildings. I know that there was neighborhood meetings, but it seemed the only thing that was done was the buildings were turned a bit.
Right.
And this is about compatibility, not talking about making those one-story on the south, or even flipping them over so that they're butted against the other buildings to the north and the ones on Colorado, and put the parking around the perimeter. Because with LED lighting these days, I mean, I know that'd be an issue, but LED is very directional and it won't, the light won't spill over to the neighbors. Doesn't bleed out. You know, just to try to be a good neighbor and help make it more compatible, so that, you know, even on the west side there, you can flop those and put the parking around the perimeter. And that way, we keep them farther away from the homes that are there. And the traffic, obviously, I'm sure we're going to talk about that too, but with the right turn lane seems part of a, I'll go into the traffic later, but I hope they address something like that about having the neighborhood meetings, but, you know, because we've gone through other apartments and we've worked with them, and I remember the meeting in the lobby after, and they turned the buildings, they moved the buildings, they helped them build a wall, you know, it was kind of a good neighbor type thing, and it seemed to work out. Added trees, but you guys have done that.
Yeah.
But something to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, if you look at this picture that's up on the screen, if you just, you reverse the whole complex, I know that's simplified, but reverse the whole complex where they, this parking lot that's up here on the edge is on the edge down here. It pushes all of the buildings back away from that south side.
And then the parking on the, I would say, parking on the west side too, along Colorado.
Yeah, I mean, there's, but it seems to me...
I don't know if that's more acceptable to the neighbors.
Seems to me you could get the same amount of real estate and buildings and, you know, 120 units on the same piece of property, just reconfigured a little bit. And I can empathize with the developer. I'm sure they've spent a lot of money on this design and apologize for dragging y'all through the mud on this, but we're trying to find a compromise with our community that we have to live here with. And, you know, make it so that it's functional for the community as a whole. It's, so, anybody else have any comments? Okay, now we have some time for the developer to address the council. Please.
Mayor, council, my name is Sean Lake, 1744 South Val Vista Mesa here on behalf of the property owners. We appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening and appreciate the comments that we've received. Now, with this PowerPoint is being loaded, a couple of points I wanted to just point out, trees grow about, these trees will grow about two to three feet a year, is what I'm told from the architect. As far as the traffic study, let me just clarify, we did submit a traffic study, that traffic study was then updated, and then we hired a new traffic engineer to study the study and the update, and then do new numbers. And we brought our traffic engineer, she is here with us to give a presentation after me, if the mayor would allow that, because we know traffic was very important at the Planning Commission, so we thought it'd be important to have our traffic engineer here to address those specific comments. And what we propose as a solution, not just coming here to say, hey, just approve it, approve it, we're coming here with a solution to make things better. And so we appreciate that, but we have had several traffic engineers studying this area and making recommendations on how to make things better. So having said that, I'll go ahead and get started on this project, and we appreciate the spirit in which the discussion has transpired already. So as staff pointed out, this property was originally zoned for multifamily development in 2003, 20 years ago. Then it was updated in 2007, at which time they put some caps on density and saying, you know, in this area, two-story is really the cap of what we want, and this is the density of what we want in this area. And that was done in 2007 by ordinance that was set forth. And so the density was established, and the height was really established, saying this is what is compatible and we think is compatible, the council, not this council, but the council said this is what we think is compatible in this area, given what is planned in this area. So property owner, these are the rules, abide by them. Now we are here eight, many years later, I'm not going to do the math on that. And here we are with a site plan for the zoning that was established several decades ago for a project that tries to comply with every jot and tittle, or whatever we call it, everything with the ordinance. And so I've listed some of those things. What was approved was approximately 122 units, we're about 120. Check, we meet that. What was approved was two-story, we provide no more than two-story. What was approved was 28 feet, we're at about 23.10. What was approved was 20% open space, we've got 22%. What was approved was 234 with parking. Again, parking's sometimes a problem. We don't want people bleeding off into neighborhoods. So we've designed this site with more parking so that we don't have that problem. And then we've worked, as we've pointed out with those traffic studies extensively, to make sure that the level of service is acceptable to the community, the city code, which the city code specifically spells out what is acceptable. Now, as this council knows, because this is not the first time you've discussed traffic, level of service D is not the same thing as getting a D from your English teacher, which my father would have disciplined me for getting a D. But a level of service D is a, that's good from a traffic perspective. That's an acceptable level, and the city code sets forth, we think this is an acceptable level of service, we're going to write it into our code to tell people who develop in our community, you got to achieve a D or better. And if you're less than a D, an E or an F, you need to do some remediation efforts. And that's typically associated with remediation efforts adjacent to your site. But as you'll see in our project, this property owner is voluntarily willing to go off-site and make improvements off-site where others haven't been asked to do it in order to address this concern. So let's keep going. As far as buffering, I know that was a big topic of discussion. As staff pointed out, the orientation of the buildings were really turned on an angle so that you limit that flat wall plane, both in amassing, but also a visibility standpoint, we've limited it to stories. And were this property abutting up to these homes on the south, we would think, hey, that's probably not enough, a big enough buffer. We range anywhere from 135 to 185 feet, depending upon the angle of the building, as far as distance, because the city, when they originally designed this master plan, built in a buffer. There is a 100-foot buffer that the city owns, that the city can go in and put trails and landscaping and trees at any time, but we will also be putting in landscaping and buffering and trees in our buffer area on our property. So not only will there be trees on our property, but the city also has the opportunity, when it landscapes its public trail system, to put in additional buffering in that area. So you've got structures that are 135 to 185 feet away from the property line, the north property line of several of the neighbors. We're installing screen walls, we've worked with staff to incorporate additional landscaping and excessive code and oversizing that landscaping, so it has more of an impact to begin with, and then it will grow, as was pointed out earlier. We reoriented the buildings and have that condition of approval, as staff pointed out. This is the view of what that would look like. Now, the sandy area that you see with nothing on it, that's the city's trail. So at some point, that's going to be designed with open space and trails, and I'm sure the city's Parks Department and the city council will do an excellent job of designing that and putting in good trees and a good trail system, so it's very attractive, leading to the community center directly to the east of here. So there will be additional in that sandy area. But you can see that those trees do screen and will screen those two-story buildings. Now, let's talk about traffic a little bit. Typically, when you do a project, you look at adjacent improvements adjacent to your site. I put in a Walmart down on the main strip, I do improvements to the street, and I widen and improve the street adjacent to my site, I put in a... I put in a traffic signal, I put in right turn lanes, deceleration lanes, or whatever it may be for that project. I don't go a half mile to the east and improve the intersection down there, and I don't go to a half mile somewhere else. But in identifying this site, it was identified, well, first off, let me say, both studies confirmed that the site does meet level of service C or better adjacent to the site. So coming in and out of this project out into Colorado, we do meet the city code, exceed the city code. Both the study, the update, and then the new study confirmed those results, and then the city's traffic engineer reviewed all three of those and, and confirmed that as well. Let me go to this next slide, which we'll talk about it. What was identified was a failing, if you will, of Cortson and Peert. Now Cortson and Peert, all of us have been there, all of us have driven it, we all know it's a problem. The problem is that the improvements just haven't been done. We get that. Now, when this road is ultimately built out, this isn't going to be a problem, this won't be an issue. This was an issue long before this development, and this developer came in with a site plan. This issue went in when the community center went in. This issue was there when the Hancock three projects south of the community center were approved, both the zoning and the site plan. This issue has been there. It wasn't until recently that this property owner has contacted the property owner on the southeast corner and worked with that property owner, and they've agreed to work with us and the city to dedicate the right-of-way to make improvements to the intersection of Cortson and Peert that would allow this developer to advance the cost to install a right-turn lane at that intersection with the, that property owner agreeing to dedicate that right-of-way, where that's the last condition that staff was pointing to. This property owner would be required as part of its development, not five years from now, when this development happens, to install that right-turn lane at Cortson and Peert, which would bring the level of service, which is an E, which isn't even a grade in English anymore, ever, from an E to a D, which is an acceptable level of service, which then again complies with city code. And so this property owner voluntarily agreed to go out and do that and make that immediate improvement so that the traffic that exists today as a problem can be remedied and make it much better than it is today. And again, Shelley is with me, she'll have more detail on that. Because this is the city council and not planning commission, city councils take a lot of things into consideration that don't, planning don't necessarily take into consideration. This council, at the end of the day, has to pass a budget. You have to run a city, you have to do things. This project will have a positive impact upon the city of Casa Grande in that it will generate a million and a half dollars in revenue to the city with the construction of this project. It will also generate about $155,000 annually to the city that will go to the budget. So from a city council perspective, what's in the best interest of the city? Letting this land stay fallow or letting this developer move in, solve a traffic existing problem that's been a problem for many years, and then also create a revenue source for the city ongoing that will benefit the entire city as well. Let's talk about projects, and I mentioned this a little bit earlier, that have been other projects developed in this area that had the Cortson Peert failing intersection. That issue was there, but yet those projects moved forward. I think when the community center went in, it was primarily because the property owner wouldn't work with the city on right-of-way. We now have a relationship with that property owner, as I know the city does, that they have agreed to work with us to dedicate that as part of this, and my client is willing to go in and make those improvements as part of this development immediately. Again, those Hancock projects south of here went in where those were failing, but those didn't have to be addressed with those projects. But my client, where others were not asked to, my client is willing to step up to the table and solve a problem. So, at the end of the day, as staff pointed out, there's, there's a checklist of things in the code that the council or the planning commission evaluate when evaluating a project. I think staff went through the general plan, it's compliant with the general plan, it's consistent with the zoning, this has been in place for over 20 years, consistent with all the zoning code, consistent with the development standards, consistent with traffic requirements. Staff is recommending approval, the traffic engineer has reviewed the original traffic study, the updated study, and the new traffic engineer study and approved those, the city engineer, and we do agree with those recommendations for approval. Now, as far as compatibility, that was brought up. I know this city council strives to be consistent so that the developers, when they do come, have a consistent application. We think the buffer that has been provided on the south side of this project is substantial. To go from 135 feet to 185 feet, separation between the property line is huge for two-story units. You go just a mile to the east and you look at the new apartment project going up over at, what is that, Treckel and, and Cortson, southeast corner, you've got two and three-story multifamily projects going in today, as we speak, under construction, that are closer than this, and that buffer was sufficient. We have a much larger buffer, so we think we have exceeded not only the standard in the code, but also the application as other projects have been approved in this area. We think 135 to 185 feet is a huge buffer, we've agreed to the oversized landscaping, we've agreed to the additional trees, we've agreed to the wall, we've agreed to, to work with the city on all these and install it with this project. And in addition, we've agreed to go solve a traffic problem that exists with or without our project today. And that will be done with this project, not five years from now. So we think we've done a very good job of trying to work with the city council, or work with the city and your staff to try to solve as many problems as we can, we possibly can, both with our project and, and off-site. And so we would hope you would support this project. I, I'm going to defer some time now to the traffic engineer, and then if there's any questions at the very end, after everything, I'm happy to come up and, and give kind of a response at that time. So thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Sean. Shelley?
Just wait for a minute while the presentation is coming up. Forgot which button to push. Mayor, Council, thank you for letting me join you here tonight. As was stated, my name is Shelley Sorensen, I am a licensed traffic engineer, I work in the city of, well, in, I, our office is located in Scottsdale, Arizona, but I work in the Arizona Casa Grande, we work down here quite often with Monir and also up in the Phoenix metro area. So we were brought onto this project, as was mentioned, kind of as a second engineer to help review what had been done, but also to help them look and see what they could do as they're moving forward, as a local, more local engineer that knows the area. Do I need to point in his?
The down button.
Okay, we'll get it, thank you. Thank you, Sean. For this project, typically when we look, there are standards when we're looking at engineering projects, and so we use, the Institute of Transportation Engineers has a standard for how we develop traffic to and from a project. This project generates approximately 845 trips, weekday trips, and then 60 trips during the AM peak hour and 72 trips during the PM peak hour. The reason really that this is important or something to be considered is that a, a project of this size is typically of less than 100 trips in the peak hour, is typically a, considered an impact of less significance. So that's why generally, this would just be a traffic statement, you would do the traffic statement, look at the closest intersections and move along because it's not going to create traffic issues further down the road. As was mentioned, we collected additional data. The data was collected on Tuesday, January 9th, schools were in session, we made sure, to make sure that this was a typical day, there's schools just down the road from this location, so we wanted to make sure schools were in session and this was the typical day that we were collecting traffic, not something abnormal. We collected 24 hours of actually video footage for this area, and from that video footage, we picked the peak hours, and the peak hours for this area are 7:30 to 8:30 and then 3:15 to 4:15. And what you'll notice really is makes sense, these correlate with the school beginning and school getting out, right? So that's something that we look at and we go, okay, that makes sense, the school gets in and out at those times, so those are the peak hours on this roadway. And just for reference, when we're designing roadways, we design for the peak hour, that is really what we look to design roadways for. In addition, the next step really is, we take the traffic that is being generated by this site and we distribute it to the surrounding area. The trip distribution for this project was distributed based on existing traffic patterns. So as you can see, 25% of the traffic was coming to and from the west, 35% was going to and from the north, 40% to and from the south. So that's the existing pattern that we saw was happening at the intersection of Cortson and Peert, and so that's how we decided these people aren't going to drive any different than the rest, and so they're going to follow the same patterns. Additionally, the city of Casa Grande assumes a 25, or sorry, I apologize, a 5% growth rate, and what that does is it allows us to take existing traffic and project it into the future. As the area grows, traffic's going to grow, that's that assumption. We looked at a assumed opening year of 2025, so that means we took today's volume, well, the 2023 volumes that were counted, and we grew them for two years at a 5% growth rate. And so just for reference, this is following the standard Casa Grande traffic impact study guidelines that are written in the code. From this, we found, right, so these are the intersections that are specifically next to this project. So it would be the two driveways along Colorado as well as Colorado and Cortson, and from our analysis, it was determined that the driveways as well as the intersection of Cortson and Colorado operate at a level of service D or better. As was mentioned, a level of service D is acceptable in traffic engineering, and so all of these intersections are operating at acceptable levels of service with this project. So now, as part of this project, obviously, we went back, I was not in here for the planning and zoning meetings, but I went back and reviewed them and listened to the concerns that were brought up by the neighbors, and from what we could tell, the concerns that were brought up by the neighbors, really, one was the capacity on Cortson between Colorado and Peert, the difficulty getting out, exiting Colorado headed westbound onto Cortson Road, and then the eastbound queuing that was occurring at Cortson and Peert. So these were kind of the three areas that we looked at when we were diving deeper into some of the traffic. When we talk about capacity on a roadway, that's the amount of cars that can travel on a road, and that's really based on the number of lanes there are, the more lanes, the more cars that can go through. So as you are probably well aware, that portion of Cortson between Colorado and Peert is one lane in each direction. And so the existing ADT that was recorded on January 9th is about 8,300 vehicles per day, so that's how many cars are on that road on a given day. For a two-lane undivided, our, our principal arterial, you can have about 15,000 cars on the roadway until you've maxed out capacity on that roadway, meaning it becomes bumper to bumper, you can't drive anymore. So just for reference, you're at about 64, with this project, you reach about 64% of the total capacity of that roadway. So even with this project, that roadway isn't suddenly going to go from free-flowing to bumper to bumper, can't move. So there is capacity on the road to take this project. Another one of the concerns was the difficulty of exiting Colorado headed westbound onto Cortson, so that's the northbound left. With the 24-hour queue day that we collected, cameras were positioned at Cortson and Colorado at that intersection, as well as at the General Dollar facing west, so that we could see both directions. From those videos, from that data, we reviewed minimal to no queuing was observed at the intersection of Cortson and Colorado, meaning we, we observed cars, but they were able to make those movements, that northbound left and as well as the westbound left into the project. And then, so then also what we do is we have a software that analyzes the traffic, and so what we can do is we take the traffic volumes and we put them into the software, and we can kind of model what's happening. And in our model as well, we could see that that northbound left was operating a level service D, which is 26.8 seconds of delay, and then at most, you were seeing about 13 feet of queuing. The last concern was the eastbound queuing at Cortson and Peert. So once again, with the 24-hour video data that we collected, the cameras were positioned, one of them was positioned at Cortson and Peert, and then there was also one at the Dollar General facing east. There was a queue of approximately 25 vehicles that was observed at 7:47 and then at 4:10 in the PM peak hour, and when we watched both of those cleared within 65 seconds. And just for reference, the cycle length of that signal is about 100 seconds, and so all of those vehicles were able to clear in that one cycle length. I think, so this is, I think you, I think you have to push it. Yeah, it's a video. So what this is, is this, so the software that we use is a sim, right, we can make a simulation of what's happening. So you can see, this is kind of what was our best guess of what was happening there at Cortson and Peert. You can see that the traffic is backing up approximately halfway between Colorado and Peert, and then it backs up and it's not making it through the signal, and so this is really what's happening, existing condition, is that people aren't getting through, it's slowing down, we don't like waiting at signals. So when we look at things in traffic, when we're trying to mitigate or solve the problems, there are different things that we can look at. And so specifically, when we looked at the intersection of Cortson and Peert, we can see that the eastbound shared through right is where we were getting the level of service E, and so obviously, that's part of where our problem is happening. And so one thing that we looked at was, okay, well, what if we add a right-turn lane? Will that help mitigate that movement? We also looked at volumes, and when we look at volumes, a significant amount of the volumes are making that movement. So when we are able to add that right-turn lane, so we'll have a separate eastbound through lane and a separate right-turn lane, we're able to actually mitigate those two movements with separate lanes, or actually able to operate a level of service D, and so, right, an acceptable level of service. In addition, when we're, when we do that, we're able to kind of optimize the way the signal is operating, and so the northbound left, which was also failing in the existing condition, we were able to give more time to the northbound left, and so that was also able to be mitigated. So with adding the right-turn lane, not only are we mitigating your eastbound shared-through-right movement, you're also mitigating your northbound left. So you're kind of two birds with one stone, helping that intersection overall operate better. So as mentioned, this is the eastbound right-turn lane at the intersection of Cortson and Peert. You can see that it's drawn in there. This, right, so what we can do is we can take the same model that we ran, let me click that, well, actually, I may be able to do it myself, I think, but, perfect. So you can take the same model that we ran previously with the traffic queuing, and you can see that now with that additional turn lane, the traffic is not going to back up. You have the additional lane that will allow the traffic to flow. Once again, this is the analysis out of our analysis, so this is the results out of our software, is that previously, you were seeing a level of service E, once we add that right-turn lane, we're seeing level of service D for that intersection and for that movement. There's just a couple of constraints that I'm going to mention, right, as a traffic engineer, we look at the potential of what may happen. This is looking westbound at the intersection of Cortson and Peert. As was mentioned there, right-of-way does technically not belong to the client, nor it's owned by a private owner, and so there have been discussions about getting the right-of-way, but there is also power lines that run there that will have to be underlined or taken care of or abandoned or whatever. I am not the engineer that decides that, but obviously, they will have to be moved or mitigated. And then there's just a, a simple cost, and these are high-level costs associated with putting in that mitigation, about $40,000 for pavement, potentially $60,000 for relocating those power poles, depending upon the whole process. And then the timing, and the timing is really dependent upon the utility relocation, but it would be probably about three to six months, depending on that utility location. And then just kind of a summary, the eastbound right-turn lane mitigated the movement, the eastbound right movement to a level of service D with a delay of 40- eastbound right movement, to a level of Service D with a delay of 48 seconds. And then additionally, it also helped mitigate that northbound left. So you're also solving another issue at that intersection to a level of Service D where the delay is 52.3 seconds, which are both acceptable levels of service for that intersection. So adding the right turn lane will mitigate and address the delay that is existing at the intersection of Quartzon and Pert with or without our project, but will help, this developer is willing to help fix that issue and the problem. And then just, this goes back to, the staff is confident within the next few years that there will be additional roadways. And so as a traffic engineer, we look at this, because if the eastbound right turn is the issue in the next few years when these roadways come through, there will be other routes that help alleviate that same movement as well. And that is the end of my presentation. Any questions?
Questions to staff, or the, Lisa?
When you do the traffic study, you said it was during a 24-hour period.
Yes.
So is that, is that a normal timeframe? Because it just seems to me it's just one day, 24 hours, I mean.
So typically, what is collected for a typical traffic engineering study is you, there are general, so this is a school, right? So typically, around a school, we would collect two hours in the morning and two hours in the afternoon of peak data. We wouldn't collect 24 hours of data. We'd collect on a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. Those are your typical average days for collecting traffic. You choose a day when school is in session, or when there's not a holiday, or when, like, I'll look at the city map and make sure there's nothing, you know, on the calendar that's special or different for the specific area. And so then generally, you're just collecting four hours of peak hour data. In this case, we collected 24 hours because we weren't quite sure when the peak hour was. And so we went above and beyond so that we would have the full day, a full typical day of traffic data to be able to analyze and kind of look at.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Mayor, I have another one.
Go ahead.
Because of course, we're not traffic experts. You know, we, we count on people like you, and, but, you know, the neighbors aren't either. You know, so when they come out of that subdivision, or that, you know, that off Colorado, there's a lot of traffic. And so are you, I mean, i- is this, I know you, you said it's acceptable, you know, but doing the right turn lane is going to bring us down to, you know, D instead of E. And so you're saying this is an average traffic count? I mean, you know, when it comes to the amount of time to get through a stoplight, it's, it's acceptable, so this is not something extreme, you know, is what they're experiencing. But then, you know, but they're the ones that are living it every day. We drive by there every day. We see it, we get frustrated if, you know, you're, you're waiting through one, one light. So, so I guess my question is, how do you, you know, address people that are, you know, they, they're living it every day?
Yes. Well, and I, right, I am not, I am not living it every day, and that is your, and your responsibility to live it every day. And I think, right, there, there will always be, and I'm a traffic engineer, and we design for this peak hour, but we don't design for accidents, we don't design for crashes, we don't design for the situations which, as frustrating as they can be, right, the accident outside my street when I'm trying to get my kids to school, we can't design a road for that, or your roads would be four, or five, or six lanes wide where you don't need them to be. And so there will always be, there will always be some level of, right, there's going to be an accident, there's going to be slowdown. And especially in a growing area, more so than others, I would venture to say that as this area grows and as the intersection of Pert and Quartzon and all the rest of the legs grow out, traffic only flows there better, even with the additional traffic that you're going to see there.
Okay. Bob?
I just wanted to make a comment about the moving traffic graphic that, that you showed. We've seen similar to that that Duane brought to us with, with a problem intersection. And I admit, it was, it was kind of hard to believe, but the, the improvements were done, and I'll be darned if it didn't, didn't fix everything that we were looking to fix. So I believe in those.
No.
Thank you, Bob. All right, I don't see any other questions for the applicant, so thank you. You guys aren't going anywhere, right? Okay. So at this point in time, then, I'm going to open the floor, but I want to lay down a couple of, of requests and rules, if you will, if you'll bear with me. Again, try and keep your comments to three minutes. There will be a timer, it will buzz you when the three minutes is up. And anybody who comes forward, please state your name and your address for our records. I would ask that there be no loud outbursts from the crowd. If you have, have a need to clap, then, okay. But no, no heckling, or yelling, or anything from, from the audience, because if, if it does happen, I will ask you to leave. So I want to keep control of the comments, and if it's been said, you don't need to rehash the, the exact same thing. I would recommend you come up and say, you know, I agree with so-and-so, it is a problem, and, you know, please consider it. But, you know, don't have to, you don't have to regurgitate the whole thing, but if you want to capsulize it in your comments, that's fine. Just trying to make sure we, we try and not be here too late, because we have quite a few speakers, and I want to also be respectful of everybody's time. And, yeah, and that's the last piece, and that is, let's, let's be respectful of each other. Appreciate everybody's time who's here tonight. Understand there's a lot of passion behind this project, so we are here to listen. And if there's some clarification we need on a particular piece of the topic, then we will break to answer that question with staff and/or with the developer. So I'm going to start here, and I'm trying to pull these in order that they were submitted. So the first speaker card I have is Jeff Dewald.
Hi, Jeff Dewald, 1328 East Judy Drive, so that's in G Diamond Ranch. The driving engineer, what you haven't taken into consideration is Judy Drive, the impact. We're at the south portion of that complex. So now we're a pass-through street for everyone, for Legacy School, and it's gotten really bad. We have parents that park there at the, at Maria and Silver Leaf to wait for their, their kids, and then they'll buzz through there after they've picked up Billy or Johnny, sometimes on, on Judy, 40, 50 miles per hour on a residential street. So we're having problems with people just flying through our street. We've become a pass-through street. So this whole thing with the, the traffic, you did not take Judy Drive into consideration when you did this. Also, at, over there, Pueblo and O'Neal, where Legacy School is, we have to look at the traffic impact that that school has placed on that neighborhood. Those are all single-lane streets, both of those right there. So about 2:30 in the afternoon, you have cars that are lined up, all four corners there, and it becomes really dangerous sometimes, because people do not do very well doing left and right-hand turns and going straight.
Jeff, I want to remind you, this is on the, the G Diamond project. It's not on, not on, not on Legacy.
And actually, this, this affects G Diamond Ranch.
Keep it on, keep it on.
The way that the community has been planned, so we were talking about how the community's been planned. The planning of that has impacted G Diamond Ranch. So putting in complexes, multifamily complexes, you have one at this corner over here, in a four-mile square area, complex there, now you want to put one over here, you have one on that end, that end. Now you're also putting Cotton Ranch in. So now you have five multifamily residences that you've put in at four-square-mile areas. You're creating an impact on traffic, you're, and you're strictly very, you're having a huge impact on our street. We used to have a nice, quiet neighborhood, nice, quiet street. It no longer is. So when you put this in, which is going to be right there in Colorado, when people want to pass through to, like, let's say, Safeway or that, we're going to have even more of an impact on Judy Street. The other thing is, if you want to be responsible, you want to be good neighbors, G Diamond Preserve is one of the most expensive neighborhoods in, on this side of the 10, and you're putting that apartment complex there. You're not doing anything, you're not doing them any favors for their property value, zero.
Hi, I'm Darla Dewald, his wife, 1328 East Judy Drive. Jeff and I have lived in that community for 15 years. We were the first owner in our home in that new community when it went in, and we've been excited about a lot of the changes that have happened in our area, and the improvements that are, you know, happening in our community. And we're thrilled when things are going in a way that is an improvement for everyone and that we can all benefit from it. The problem is, is when the infrastructure isn't there to support the growth that's happening. And, you know, we can talk about the school, Legacy School, and you could say that doesn't, it doesn't affect what's going on. Well, it does, because these kids are going to go to Legacy School, a lot of them. And there's 1,300 students or more at that school now, and that's affecting traffic. We get Judy Drive, as he mentioned, we get an awful lot of traffic now we didn't used to get. It's become a pass-through street, because it's easy from Colorado, which doesn't go all the way through, to go right through Judy Drive into the other neighborhood, over to Pueblo, which then goes over to O'Neal, which then goes out to either Cottonwood or goes to Treacle. And tho- that's the way people are getting through to that side. The people on that side use our street to pass through, to come through Colorado and go out that right-hand turn, which yes, that is an improvement. But there's other issues that aren't being accounted here for in that, and I don't, I don't agree, a study is a study, great. But I live it. And I can tell you that the past three times that I have gone to Walmart or Walgreens and have been coming back, so I'm headed, which direction on Parrot? I'm headed north on Parrot, toward Quartzon, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and I, last week, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I waited through three lights to turn left, three lights, to turn left. And in that time, I'm not in the turn lane, I'm way back in that other lane, which now is, is now going past Quartzon, which has to merge into one lane. So now we're blocking that traffic, and that's not considered. And the last two times, I, three times I've gone out, I've had to sit through two and three lights, just to make a left-hand turn to go to my community. Getting out of Colorado isn't such a big issue to me, but all of that traffic coming into our community is an issue to me. And when Jeff mentioned the other multifamily units that are going in, in this, in this general area, Treacle, that's going to affect our traffic at Quartzon. It is. This new unit is also going to affect our, our, our traffic there as well. So this is a real problem for us in that it's not as simple as, if we put in a right-hand turn lane, everything's going to improve and fairy dust is blown and everybody's happy. It's just not going to be that way. And until Colorado gets extended, which you guys have been telling us that for a while, O'Neal gets extended, that is a mess, that school, that is all backed up, it's affecting our community in a big way. Until those things happen, we've got problems. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Laura Dixon. I live at 1323 East Palo Verde Drive, excuse me, in G Diamond Ranch subdivision. And I have, I spoke also at the planning and zoning meeting, and I believe that your planning and zoning committee took into consideration everything that the developer was trying to do, and they denied it. I think it was the proper decision at the time. When I saw the slide up there of the cantilevered buildings that was also put out to planning and zoning, they looked at that, they said, mm, no. Our major problem, three of them, traffic, property values, and at this point in time, I can't remember the third one, traffic. Colorado goes nowhere and will go nowhere for five years. I believe that. So all of the, all of the 291 cars that they say they're making space for will come out on to Colorado. They will then proceed north. They will either try and turn left onto Quartzon, which is tough at present time, or they will turn right onto a one-lane-headed east street. We're at D now, though that I respect the traffic engineers' work, you're going from D to F. The right turn lane is a nice idea, it would help to alleviate things as they are. Once the complex at Quartzon and Treacle opens up, and I, I apologize, I don't know how many units are in there.
120, no.
No, no. Quartzon and Treacle, the three-story prison complex, as we jokingly call it.
Probably 300.
Okay. Now you're adding 300 units, two cars per unit, six, because husband and wife, everybody works, peak traffic hours, a goodly portion of that traffic is going to head right down Quartzon. You're probably tired of hearing about traffic. Let, let me talk about the decision to build all the high-density housing that has been made. The one person touched on it. We now have high-density housing by Hancock Builders at Cottonwood and Pert. We have high-density housing across from Safeway. We now have high-density housing at Treacle and Pert. That was supposed to be a, I hear you, that was supposed to be a medical complex. How the three-story building got in there, I don't know. When we bought our house in G Diamond Ranch, what was planned-
Please wrap up your comments.
I will. Was planned was a 55-plus community, single-story, blah, blah, blah. Now we've got two stories, traffic problems, you're impacting my property value. Please protect my property value. I appreciate the fact that the developer has tried very hard to accommodate everything, but it is a development that your community does not want. Thank you.
Daryl Dixon?
I'm Mr. Phil, and I'd like to say that.
Okay. Thank you, Daryl.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. I'm Richard Wilke. I live at 1433, east of place in Casa Grande. Traffic, public safety, home values, privacy. This is not a NIMBYism issue. These are real legitimate concerns of the Casa Grande residents that will be directly impacted by this proposed project. The developer and his lawyers have stated that they have met all of the requirements of the, of the city and have presented data, information, conceptual pictures, and simulations that he says clearly demonstrates that these apartments will only have a minimal impact on the surrounding area and actually benefit the city. With regards to the meeting of the city's zoning requirements, while they have met a lot of the administrative requirements, the concepts, the concepts that have been raised by residents related to traffic, safety, and home values, which are also criteria that should or need to be met, have proved that they have fallen short in these critical areas. As to the claims regarding the minimal impact of the community, reality just doesn't support these claims. Some of you have probably experienced firsthand the challenges that exist on Quartzon, and hopefully have seen the pictures and the videos that clearly show that the traffic at Quartzon does back up past the Color, the Colorado intersection. The projections and it's based on, and their, their ideas of, it's not going to have a, it's not going to have that much of an impact, the, the number, the projected number of cars that they're using is just too low, given the economy of today, which requires at least two people to be able to afford the rent. And if you look at their economic and financial statement, it says 1,825 to $2,200. You're going to have at least two people that are going to have to work to be able to afford those, those apartments. He continues to ignore the, or address the safety concerns related to the apartment tenants cutting through the G Diamond Ranch neighborhood, or how children living in the apartment will be able to safely cross Colorado to walk to school. And a solution to the privacy concerns and impact on home values of the adjacent neighborhoods to the south was reorienting the apartments, which would only actually increase the number of balconies being able to look into the backyard, and- of balconies being able to look into the backyard, and plant some additional trees and bushes, which I like, but. Instead of just reducing the apartments along the south border to a single-story that was asked for by, by residents. The idea that these apartments are badly needed at this time is just not accurate. As you have heard, have heard, or will hear, there's over 2,000 multifamily units under construction right now, with over 1,000 of them within one square mile of the site. 2,000 were approved, an additional 1,000 in the planning process. So these 120 units are not going to fill some immediate critical need that would justify overlooking the negative, the significant negative impact of this project. Timing and location for projects is everything. This is the wrong site for this project at this time. We deserve better. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Got that one on the money. David and Jody Crosby? Crosby? Or Crossley?
Crosby.
Crosby. No. Sorry, I can't read your writing.
No. It comes with the job, sorry.
But now, but now I realize who you are.
All right. What I have here is a picture that my, oh, I'm, Dave and Jody Crosby, 1434 East Dove Place in Casa Grande. What I have here is, you might not be able to see, but it's a picture that my wife took this afternoon. And what it shows is Colorado is here. The pictures show there's eight cars past Colorado, and she said there's another 10 behind that on her way back from picking up her kids from school today. We heard a lot of analysis by the traffic report, but it, like you said, and it has been said, it isn't the reality of what we are experiencing. And in regards to the, where the proposed future improvements, I think by allowing all this to happen in advance, we're putting the cart before the horse, that it needs to be there before we allow it to happen, so we're not running into problems that we can't handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, and I'm sorry, I can't read your last name.
Wilkie.
Oh, Wilkie. You have better handwriting. Richard's got better handwriting than you do.
Not anymore. Anyway, but you should know.
It's detached cursive, by the way.
It is really bad handwriting, I'm sorry about that. My name is Michelle Wilkie. I live at 1433 East Dove Place. I am Richard's wife. I am sorry for what I'm going to say. No, just kidding. I am sorry to him for me being here, because he, he's married to a Latino woman. What can I say? Latino women are very passionate, and we say our mind, and yeah. So I had a whole thing written up, and it was really PC, and I don't want to read it because as I'm listening to the developer, the developer's lawyers say they have worked with the, with the neighbors in the community and the city to ensure that we are all happy about this project. They have not worked with us one bit, okay? From the initial meeting that we had at the REC Center, we mentioned to them all our concerns, and the only thing that they have done is plant more trees and tilt the buildings. So how is that listening to the community members? That is not, okay? From the beginning, we said, why does this look like this? Why is this so modern? It doesn't fit in our neighborhood. Why does this apartment look like this? We don't like it one bit. It doesn't reflect what our community is going for. And now I know today that it's looking after the community center. I'm sorry, I don't like the look of the community center, but that's my own personal opinion. It doesn't fit in with the neighborhoods, okay? So I'm glad the developer is making his building look like the community center, but it doesn't fit anything else around it, okay? The biggest concern for me besides the looks and my property values is the, the traffic, the traffic concerns. You've heard, there's apartments, and you know, there are apartments at Cottonwood and Treacle, there are apartments by the Safeway, there are apartments over here in Quartzon and, and whatever street it is. There are apartments everywhere surrounding us. There's going to be another apartment that's proposed behind the Dollar General. How many apartments can you fit in one square mile, guys? How many apartments? How many, do we realize that the city has 4,000 planned and approved apartments right now? That's at least 8,000 extra cars in our roads. And out of those 8,000 apartments, 3,000 cars are going to be in just one street. That is a traffic nightmare. That's a traffic nightmare. It's already a nightmare. I mean, we're not making up the pictures, we're not doctoring them, we're actually taking them live, going, okay, I don't know how to get out of my neighborhood, or I have to speed really quickly, maybe cause an accident to get out because there's no other way. We are all for growth, we're all for developing the city, but it needs to make sense. Colorado's not going to be going through anytime soon. In five years, I think is a very conservative estimate. I think it's more like 10 years before that whole thing is put through. The reality is the developers will continue to come with these developments because they don't need to have a shore water supply, right? And that's the biggest problem. We care about our neighborhoods. We want our citizens to have the quality of life that we deserve. We deserve better than just to fill it all up with apartments. I've said my piece. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Johnson.
Michael Johnson. I live at 1879 North Maria Lane, and I totally agree with everybody that's come up and was against this 220 apartments, or whatever they are. We just don't have the infrastructure in right now. Now, I've, from what I've seen in the past, projects goes up, but their improvements is the last thing to come up. Good example, the high schools. I'm not going there, but everybody knows what it's like to drop off and pick up a kid. If you get that right lane going from Quartzon to Pert, that's nice, but it's not long enough. It should be all the way down beyond Colorado to where you have another lane. That would be a major, major improvement. And until we get Colorado Street connected all the way to Cottonwood, or the one that's going to be going to Pert, that wouldn't be so bad. But it's not done, and I just don't see it happening within five, 10 years, you know? I just have a lot of concerns. And people who are talking about cars coming speeding through the neighborhoods to get through shortcuts, it's going to increase. It's, it's, it was a beautiful place to live, and I hope it stays beautiful and safe. My grandkids come over and play, I don't let them get near the street, but there is cars just screaming down the road. So I know, people are going to drive fast anyways, but it's not a, it's not a comforting feeling there. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next I have Jeff Davis.
My name is Jeff Davis. I live at 1311 East Prickly Pear in G Diamond Ranch. I used to be with the Bureau of Land Management for 40 years. I was a field manager, sitting in your chair, making decisions about projects. Never, in my experience, would I sit there and apologize to somebody bringing me a project without apologizing to my neighbors who have to come to meeting after meeting and meeting to speak about this with one voice. I can't believe you would say that, really. G Diamond Ranch and the Preserve is a neighborhood, we're a community. That's why we're here together in our objection to this project. I recreate in this area. My wife and I ride bikes, we run. I know a lot of these people from getting around in the neighborhood. This project, your staff member never brought up, is a degradation of our neighborhood. It's not an improvement, it doesn't stick with the theme of the houses that are there. It was originally designed to be townhouses, sold to people 55 and over. Most of the people I've talked to said that would be fine if that's what they were doing, okay? More trees and better landscaping doesn't make for better neighbors, okay? If you have people who are 55 and over and own their townhouses, they have some respect for their neighbors and some respect for their neighborhood. That was a reasonable proposal when this was originally designed in 2003. It disappeared somewhere, and I don't think your staff person really fully staffed out, how did that disappear? And our objection to moving to apartments, we don't want apartments there. I don't know how much plainer we can make it, you know? Do something different. You have something that says stronger, united. I'm telling you, I'm stronger and united with my neighbors in G Diamond Ranch and on Dove Place, and I'm wondering if you're with us, or you're just around to develop this place, that place, and the other place, without listening to the neighbors and the neighborhoods that are involved. Thank you.
Haley Cardida and Jeff Cardida. Jeff, going to leave it up to you?
It's alphabetical. Haley Cardida, 1422 East Dove Place. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As a resident directly affected by this project, many people have weighed in on this issue, whether it be on social media or otherwise. They have declared that this is an example of not in my backyard at its finest. As this project is in fact in my backyard, it is quite appropriate for me to have concerns about it. Please do not think that because it is near my home that my concerns are not relevant. I would like to start with the deed restriction that was on the land in the proposed location. When we brought, when we bought our property, we were informed that the land on the north was deed restricted to 55-plus townhomes. We accepted that as part of the growth that would occur. When we received the notification that it would be a multifamily apartment complex being proposed, it was upsetting. I know full well that things can change. However, I have an analogy that may help drive the point home regarding our community frustrations. Let's say the land was zoned for entertainment with a deed restriction indicating that it would be a golf course, only to find out later that the golf course was scrapped and it was now to be a concert venue. Sure, the area is zoned for entertainment, and it might check all the basic boxes, but does, it does not negate the concerns of the homeowners that were possibly deceived when they bought their property. In May, at the neighborhood meeting, we were told that West State's manages and maintains their own properties. I took the time to research out some of their other properties, namely Greyhawk Townhomes in Leighton, Utah, and the Porter Ranch Townhomes in Eagle Mountain, Utah. Both look aesthetically pleasing on their websites, but we know that those pictures are when the property is brand-new anyway. These two properties include amenities, many of which are at both locations, such as a pool, a dog run, playgrounds, fitness centers, and barbecue areas. Some of those residents left Google reviews. Three weeks ago, from the Greyhawk community, Ashley B. wrote, "Since Stephanie left, this place has gone downhill fast. Nothing ever gets taken care of. There is no communicate, community left here, no communication ever, seriously fallen so far downhill. Maintenance just blows us off and never comes back." Another Greyhawk resident, J.C., has lived there for seven years and posted saying, "These townhomes are okay. The place needs some serious upgrades. They want to keep raising rent prices, but the place isn't getting any nicer. Everything in these units are cheap appliances that break fairly easy or need to be replaced quite often. This place doesn't hold up to the market value at all." Porter Ranch resident, Tim H., said, "Nice place, lots of fees, frustrating and deceptive management." What does Casa Grande get? Boxes, potentially 600 residents if there are two residents per bedroom, a pool and a poolhouse, and three employees, not even a playground for children. It seems they want to offer a place to sleep and not a home for their residents, and to maximize profit with the max density per acre. They claim to have worked with the residents, but their counting of the south building allowed for more balconies to have a view into the neighboring yards and houses." Thank you.
Good evening, Jeff Cardida, 1422 East Dove Place. As a resident who is directly affected by this project, I do appreciate the opportunity to voice my concerns. I find it interesting that we may not have been involved as much. As we have had the initial meeting back in May of last year, been a productive one. To give you a quick recap of how that meeting went, the developer explained they're building a multifamily apartment complex. Here's what it looks like. Any questions? Well, there were several questions, because when we bought our property, we had documents that had disclosures about the property surrounding ours. The property was deed restricted to a 55-plus community of townhomes. We accepted this. After some discussion about why the deed restrictions were not being followed, they played it off as well. There are no deed restrictions on it now, so we don't have to worry about it. They knew about the deed restrictions, and they knew that in order to maximize this project, they needed those deed restrictions removed. This type of response is what set this entire opposition to the project in motion. The traffic concerns mostly go away with the 55-and-up townhomes. The design of the property would probably be more compatible with the surrounding areas, and the project might even have broken ground by now. It appears that the many suggestions we provided at the neighborhood meeting, which Council Member Herman pointed out, we suggested that to them as well, they were dismissed. The traffic study, three times, provided what seems to be an inaccurate representation of the actual traffic conditions that we experience every day. We've taken several pictures and asked the question, why did the developer have to complete two different traffic studies that essentially provide the same conclusion, that this project will have minimal impact? That does not seem to add up to the actual pictures showing the backup passing Colorado. It makes you wonder, why will they not include that information? How did they not see that? How did they miss that? When we have it so plain as day, almost every day. There are several new apartment complexes being built. This one's different. This location that's being proposed is essentially embedded into an existing neighborhood with only one exit. Many of the other apartment complexes connect to major roads and have adequate traffic We, as community members, showed up to planning and zoning meetings because this project affects us. Numerous members of the community voiced a strong opposition to it for very valid reasons. Not a single person voiced support from the community for this project. I would ask that you deny this project until the roads are capable of handling the traffic demand, or require the developer to abide by the original deed restrictions. Thank you.
John Meraldi.
My fellow neighbors have expressed my concerns already.
Okay, thank you, John. Nancy Wood. You're speaking on both topics?
That's her right.
Open meeting and L1, okay. Welcome back.
Yep, hello, hi, and good evening. Actually, being a longtime Arizona resident, I grew up here from being a baby back in the 50s, so I've been here a long time and seen the community grow. And I really feel frustrated with the fact that we have a family that had a farm that contributed to this community, that helped build Casa Grande, that made agreements to try and benefit the city, and there were things that haven't been followed through to honor this family and the dream of G Diamond Ranch and the area. I value Arizona, and I know it's going to grow, and, you know, I'm doing my best to help it grow in a good way. And I'm not trying to stop development, but we need to do good development, and we need to honor what we've promised in the past and hold to that. And this has gone sideways, it's not gone the right way. And being a farm area, you know, I, that G Diamond Ranch was, they had a lot of the burrowing owls that, that most of the residents here love to watch and see in our, our city. And so I drive around this area a lot, and the traffic is very, very dangerous, especially along Quartzon. I, you know, I get scared when I see people try and drive a bicycle down Quartzon and two lanes of traffic with everything backed up. I mean, I'm, I'm afraid for people's lives. So I don't agree with this particular development. I don't think it fits for our community. You know, I'm a longtime Arizona resident, please do better. You know, doing, honoring the 55 that was agreed to and putting townhomes in would be a very good alternative and be- in would be a very good alternative and be honoring what was really planned for. And I hope that that is maybe a compromise that can be worked out, and things can go forward and, you know, satisfy everybody to an extent. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Had some remarks prepared, but I think I'm just going to wing it. I've lived in this area for about 16 years. About 13 of those was in Arizona City. For those of you that have ridden down there before, Sunland Gen is a heavily-used road that is grossly inadequate and very outdated. We have our own Sunland Gen, a really small stretch of Quartzon that is heavily-used. I have driven that road many times, and it constantly baffles me, just when I think I've got traffic figured out. I'm traveling through there at 4:00 P.M. on a very regular basis. It's not fun. I'd like to point out a couple of things that, and the developers were really thorough. I appreciated their presentation. They gave a lot of data points, and I'll talk about that here in a minute. If I understand correctly, the traffic studies were done in August and October. That was before any of our winter visitors were even here. So I'm going to be conservative and say that a third of our population grows in the winter, and most of those winter visitors get here in December. They take that stretch of Quartzon. Not all of them, but some of them. I want to address, when we talk about the anticipated changes, I mean, I absolutely welcome Colorado going through and O'Neill going through and lights. It's fantastic. Mayor, I think you're personally very familiar with anticipated improvements, as we've been waiting 15 years for I-10 to be widened. It's been a nightmare. So we know what anticipated means. There's no guarantee. Somebody can tell me there's a guarantee, then I'm all for it, but anticipated is just that. It's anticipated. The developer also made the argument, and I kind of had to think about this one for a minute, that all the other multifamily units that have been approved and they're currently under construction on the corner of Cottonwood and Pert, Treacle and Cottonwood, and Quartzon and Treacle. That's not apples and oranges. The development on Pert and Cottonwood turns out onto a four-lane road with a turn lane on both Pert and Cottonwood. The one over on Safeway, I believe, it turns out on Treacle, a four-lane road with a turn lane. The mega-development on Quartzon turns out onto a terminating four-lane on Quartzon and a four-lane on Treacle, all with a turn lane. It's there, right? I don't like it, but the traffic is, it's there in theory. We don't know what this is going to bring to our community. The development they're proposing, Quartzon, we all know what that looks like.
Did I say that right?
Hi, I'm Suzanne Brenton, and I live at 1455 East Dove Place in G Diamond Preserve. So what I've been hearing tonight is that it sounds like this developer has made things just barely legal enough to kind of plop this apartment building right in the heart of our community. And if you look at the picture, it's literally the heart. It's right there in the center. And it kind of breaks my heart, because that's not what we want. It's going to be a nice, or it's not a puzzle piece that fits. And I don't think I'd mind so much if it were townhomes, maybe nice duplexes, or if it was some kind of a complex that was maybe a little fancier, I don't know if that's the right word, to fit the aesthetic, to fit the upgraded, the upscaled homes around it. G Diamond Ranch, gorgeous homes, all of them are custom-built homes, beautiful homes, peaceful neighborhood. So I think this is a puzzle piece that just doesn't fit. Of course, all the neighbors have mentioned privacy, noise, congestion, traffic concerns, density. I have a huge concern with my home value, of course. Everyone in my neighborhood, I know them all, super hard-working people. We are not filthy rich people with deep pockets. We have earned every penny. We work so hard for what we have, and most of us have put our life savings into these custom-built homes. So it's not like we're just, oh, we have all this money, we could go somewhere else. It's not like that. We've put our life savings into this. And so when we first met with the developer a year ago, he basically told us straight up, we're not a problem for him. He deals with this all the time. For me, that felt like I was the, we were bugs that just needed to be squashed. He didn't say those words, of course, but that's kind of what it felt like for us. This is an out-of-state developer. I don't think he could care less about our community. If he did, I think he'd be thinking things like, okay, maybe the 55-plus, maybe the townhomes. Lastly, I just want to say that this has been denied already for legitimate concerns and reasons. So let's listen to that wise decision again that the city council has already made. Thank you.
All right, that's all the speaker cards I have. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Yes.
I knew I couldn't sit still. Gloria Johnson Story, 1245 East Laurel Drive, also a homeowner on Rodeo Road. I'd like to just, I don't need three minutes, but I would like just to emphasize, Pirt Road has become a major road. And Mayor, you and I have talked about why it never got made wide when it was made, and that's a future concern, and I think the city might get stuck doing it. But the new development that's been approved on the west side of Rodeo and Pirt, all that way out, plus there was all that property and development coming in on Rodeo and Pirt, as you come down, Pirt has become a major road. It's the fastest way for me to go to Walmart, to go to the promenade, and people are using it more and more. And I think that would impact the traffic study just a little too, because there's so many buildings going up out north there. They've already been approved. But thank you, I had to say it. Pirt Road is going to be a major road, and we're going to have to face widening it soon. The washes aren't going to help either.
Thank you. Anyone else? Go ahead.
Blake Andrews, 1367 East Kingman Place, part of G Diamond Ranch. I'm not going to touch into anything else such. I'm an Arizona native, second generation. I grew up in the city of Tucson. I've seen what happens to a city when you develop and develop, develop before fixing the infrastructure. All you got to do is drive down to Tucson. Homeless everywhere, crime everywhere, every part of the city is now infiltrated because they developed too fast, and they didn't develop the roads and the infrastructure, and now the city is just collapsing. It has tons of problems. Doesn't have the police to withstand the city. They can't respond medically for the city, and I would hate to see that happen to Casa Grande. Me and my family moved here eight years ago. We've fallen in love with this city. We had our newest baby out here. We decided to have him here in Casa Grande because we want to be part of Casa Grande. We all know the traffic's horrible over there. We see people flying through our neighborhood all the time at 50 miles an hour. We just want to see the city take care of us and deny the developer and put something that fits our community. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Lynn Cook. I'm at 1361 East Jarden Drive in Casa Grande in G Diamond Ranch. And just quick reiterating, in their study, I didn't see the impact of those big, huge apartments going in at Quartzon and Treacle. Those cars have to go somewhere. They're all going to go north and all of them on the west. Some of them are going to go out Quartzon, and Quartzon goes from four lanes to, down to that very short two-lane spot where there's the biggest, and that right turn lane is not going to alleviate anything. There's going to be a lot of traffic coming from those apartments, I'm sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Laura. I live at 1591 East Prickly Pear Place. I live in Montero Village, which is across the street from the community center. The traffic right there on Pert and Quartzon has always been a problem for me coming out of my neighborhood, especially in the afternoons. I literally have to sit and wait and wait and wait for somebody to let me in in order to turn onto that street. So I just want you guys to take our neighborhood into consideration, too. Thanks.
Anyone else? One more, I think.
My name is Dave Keen. I live at 1456 East Dove Place. I want to make it very clear, I'm here off-duty and nothing to do with my capacity as a city employee. I'm here as a private citizen who lives in G Diamond Preserve. There's been a lot of talk tonight, and I kind of wanted to talk and hit on this a little bit, too. When I bought my property, that was one of the things I asked about the stuff that was going to be built around there. And we were very clearly told that there was a deed restriction and CCRs, and that it was basically, you know, we kind of talked a little bit about, you know, how does something like that get rid of? Is it something that disappears, or does it stay with the land? And we were told specifically that Marion Gilbert was very specific, and she was very detailed. She hired attorneys to write out this stuff and say, yeah, it's going to stay with the land. If they sell it, it still stays with the land. These CCRs, these conditions, the 55-plus, the townhouses, and the stuff, exactly what we suggested, the stuff on the south side of the complex, one-story, she specifically put in there, if they had two-story on the south side of the complex, that there'd be no windows on the second floor that were below seven feet in the unit. So you couldn't see out the windows. We talked to them about that, and they changed the buildings and made it so more balconies could look into the back of Dr. Mutha Cardeta's and Dr. Crosby's backyards. By turning those buildings, now more balconies can look into their yards. I've watched council, obviously, for years now. I watched you guys deny a really nice apartment building up on Val Vista for the exact same thing, was that you didn't want people looking out into other people's backyards. And there was a big setback distance on that apartment building as well. It was well over 100 feet, and those weren't even people that lived in Casa Grande. Those were county buildings, county houses, but from Casa Grande, they would have been looking into their backyards. A couple, somebody asked, and I'll pass these out to you guys so you have an example of what the deed restrictions are.
We have it.
Do you have this already?
Yes.
Okay, so it literally, do you have, I guess, do you have a copy of the document where they walked in and paid $30 and said, "We want to remove these deed restrictions," and they were basically gone, just like that? They paid $30 to the recorder's office and said, "Remove the deed restrictions." I don't think that's the way it works. I'm not an attorney. I don't know exactly how it works, but it seems like there'd be a process or a law or some sort of procedure rather than the person who does it. I mean, does that mean I can walk in and get rid of the CCRs for my, I paid $30 and I can remove, I could have had a second-story, a two-story house, but I didn't because that was one of the CCRs of the neighborhood. I appreciate it, the time that you gave me. I'll leave this so you guys can look at it, but you can see what I'm talking about at the recorder's office. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Anyone else? All right. Do you have any closing comments?
Yes, sir, if I could.
Go ahead.
Mayor, councilmembers, appreciate the opportunity to wrap up here. A lot of discussions has been made about traffic on Pirt and Quartzon. We understand that. That is a city-wide issue. A lot of the development that goes in does pay impact fees, and those impact fees are used to remedy those city-wide transportation issues. So the city does have the ability to address that, but the problem has been that the property owner to the south wouldn't dedicate right-of-way, which means the city would have to go buy it to solve the problem that exists today. Well, we've talked to the property owner, and they're willing to dedicate that property so that that right turn lane can be, we're trying to be installed with this development. Not five years. I know, they say, hey, if they could solve some things and it can be done concurrently, that's exactly what that condition reads and how that condition reads. It was brought up about the right turn lane at Quartzon and Pirt that we are proposing to do. And as presented by Shelley, that improvement will not only resolve from a traffic study, and I know traffic study is like a magic that I don't understand, and I'm going to leave it to myself, but it works. And traffic engineers all over the country use their standards, and these standards are applied across the country, and they seem to work. But the traffic analysis, as prepared by Shelley, as well as the other traffic engineer, indicated with this right turn lane, it would fix not only the Quartzon and Pirt eastbound, but it would also fix the northbound traffic, which was also referenced at Quartzon and Pirt, for people who were turning west or going northbound west turn, so that left turn lane, that was referenced as well. So it would fix two turning movement issues and bring both from a level of service F up to an acceptable level. Let me clarify. A lot of discussions was, just do something different, just do something different, just do something different. This property has been and has always been, since 2003, multifamily development. Again, in 2007, multifamily development at 12 units to the acre. Put that in comparison, it's very similar to the Hancock Project, which is around 12 units to the acre, those several projects. It's just this project has a more consolidated with more open space, and it has more of open feel than the Hancock Project, which has more units and less open space. And so the density's around the same. It's just we have more open space and amenities within the project. They said nothing was done except reorienting the buildings. Actually, the previous plan had five buildings that backed up to the property line along the south side. Now there's four, and we reoriented that. Architecture, architecture, everybody disagrees, but at some level, somebody in the community decided that the community center was good architecture. I personally think it's great architecture. Some people don't like it, some people like it, but we followed that pattern after the city's building that was built there. We think the architecture is very well-done and very nice, as planning staff has agreed with us on that. As far as, again, back to the multifamily question, whether this is going to be multifamily or not, that question was asked and answered in 2003, when nothing was out, well, nothing, when there weren't homes and many of the people who live here, not all, many of the people who were here bought into this area knowing that this would be a multifamily project. And that was redone in 2007, where the density was capped at 12 units to the acre. The height was capped at two stories and 28 feet. We meet all of those requirements. So the design was set in place prior to many of these people moving in of what was going to go here. It was going to be a two-story project, no higher. It was going to be 12 units to the acre, no more. And then that buffer was put in along the south side, not only on our side of the wall, but also the city 100-foot-wide buffer that creates that separation to create that compatibility between residential development. That's kind of a summary. We think this is a great project that complies with everything in the code, every rule that's been established, every, the general plan, the city code, all the design and development standards. We've met everything, and we agree to all the conditions of approval. We think this project warrants your support. We're happy to work with the council. If there's suggestions or things you would like to see, we're open to that, but I'd be happy to answer your questions as we move forward.
Donna?
I just have a couple of comments for you. You know, one of the things that you had, you mentioned a couple of times, you said in 2003, this was- in 2003, this was asked and answered. That's 21 years ago, sir. And so for me, things have changed and I respect the work that you've done immensely. But you had also mentioned about the right-turn lane being immediately, you know, done. You also mentioned the property or the poles in that area. Have you also talked to the utility company about moving those poles immediately?
We have not. This is the last thing between planning commission and now, I'm sorry, mayor, council member. In working with the utility company, that end pole that would need to be put underground is an end unit or an end line, where it goes underground at that point. That under grounding would, that pole would just need to be removed and then the pole previous to it or west of it would then become the end line at that point and then put underground. We would have to work with the utility to get that done. The utility actually does the work, we just pay them for it to get it done.
Okay. So you have talked to them on a timeline, then?
We haven't built a timeline with them, with ED2 on that. No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Ms. Laverne.
Sir, how do you respond to the residents tonight that have asked you to honor the deed that was set forth in 2018?
Those, that's a prior property owner. That deed restriction was put in, I think, May 21 of 2018, 2018. And then it was removed by the property owner in 2021. And so those, I've got the termination here in front, if you would like a copy. And so that was, that was a private matter, not a city matter. So whether that prior property owner did it or not, that's not Travis that did it, that, my client, that was a prior property owner and this property owner has certain rights. And so when it was referenced, this property's been zoned for a long time. That established the rights of a property owner to develop their property consistent with the zoning, and those still remain, and we're not changing any of that.
And I get the legality, sir, but you also said that you're willing to work with the community. When I asked the question, you were pretty clear in your answer, right? That that is something that the community has asked for tonight, that that be honored? We had homeowners that bought in that community believing that that was still in effect, and you're basically saying at this point that you're not willing to work with that. Am I correct?
Brett, can you address some of this?
I already said this, I know it's, I know the legal issue, but I'll drop the question.
And I can't. If I'm being asked by the mayor.
I'll drop the question.
Right.
Well, but the point is that I don't think we can legally consider it.
I didn't ask, I didn't ask them that. I just asked them to respond to the homeowners.
Okay.
That have voiced that. I didn't ask them to respond to me, I asked them to respond to them.
Can they? Can they respond to that question?
You have to ask the applicant.
The deed restriction was a prior property owner. So to ask this property owner to go back and deal with something that a prior property owner did, I've never seen that done. We certainly can work, but Travis is proposing a project that is consistent with the zoning, consistent with all of the city rules, legal rights, design standard, code requirements. Now, to ask this property owner, who spent a substantial amount of money getting to this point and working with the city to design a project that is compatible, to go back and live up to something of a prior property owner, I think is inappropriate. Now, again, if the city requires us to put in a 55-plus, that's certainly up to this council to say, this council, we are requiring you to do something like this? That's, that this council can certainly decide on its own, but that's not something that Travis develops.
And I would, just to that point, Mayor, because I see you looking at me, I can talk about the deed restriction, you also have the ability to go into executive session for legal advice only. But with respect to the 55-plus piece of this, the legislature a few years ago did put in a provision that says that the city may not impose a 55 or any other age restriction or rent restriction.
It would have to be self-imposed, right?
So that's correct. And so while I certainly, you know, appreciate that, you know, coming from, coming from the developer to say, you know, council needs to do what they need to do, there is a state statute, ARS 946116, that's going to preclude us from imposing age restrictions and rent restrictions on property. And so I would certainly advise you not to impose any of those restrictions tonight.
And I wasn't advocating for that either.
Any other questions? Bob?
I need some clarification on the current status of Colorado. Is that half-built, not built? Colorado from this site to Quartzon?
There are full improvements on Colorado from, I believe, Silver Reef north to Quartzon.
There is what?
Full improvement. So it's a collector road, so there are north and southbound lanes with a turn lane in the middle.
It's as big as it's going to get, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah, personally, I mean, I would like to see, work more with the residents to, you know, get those buildings moved, maybe, you know, do the one-story up like that, and also maybe even on the Colorado side. But one thing that's brought up is, you know, the right place at the right time, and I don't know if that is this right now, just because we, or I have, all these, a lot of us on council, too, have approved a lot of multifamily. So it's not that we're, you know, we have a lot going, they're usually on corners, you know, with the access, so. And I know that, just for people knowing, the policy of the city in the past has been to let development build the roads. And when they started that policy 25 years ago, they anticipated that the growth would happen a lot quicker than it did. And then we all know how the economy's worked in the past 25 years, so that's why we have some of these at Pier and Quartzon and other places, just FYI.
Yeah, this is, this is very difficult, especially for me, because I'm a pretty pro-growth guy. And really, when it comes down to it, it's about traffic at this point in time. And we, we are busting at the seams all over the city, not just in your area. And so it's been a pet peeve of mine, all the scalped cities or scalped roads we have. And I know Larry's working on a plan to make some of those improvements, and it's going to be a sizable investment by the city to fix some of the roads that we have. And this area should be one of those. We should be fixing Quartzon and Pier and then completing Pier all the way, finishing Quartzon all the way, opening Colorado, opening O'Neill. I mean, all those roads need to be opened up and need to be completed. We have, they're all on paper, looks great, but they're not there. And adding another 200 people or so, and I think that's generous, but 200 folks in that area and making that continue to be even more congested is difficult. And to do, to try and do the right thing, somebody said it earlier, you know, infrastructure is so critical, it's, you know, we don't, you know, we build stuff and we build apartments and then, and we expect development to build the infrastructure. Well, unfortunately, sometimes infrastructure's got to come before the building. And so we need to come to that reality, I think, as a city. And that's, that's a hard thing for us to do because you've got to find money to do it. We're trying to balance a budget, trying to manage the city as best we can, make sure that, you know, we do right for all of our, all of our citizens, not just G Diamond Ranch. And so it's so important, I mean, if you look at the pure economics of this, it's more economical to put in apartments on that land than it is houses. We'll have 200 feet of road that we have to worry about as a city versus if that was a development, it'd be 500, 500 feet of roads we'd have to take care of. The amount of property tax that comes in is twice on an apartment than it is on a single-family home. So from an economic, pure economic standpoint, this is a great project. But from a traffic and a local impact standpoint, I'm struggling with it. So I'd like to approve it, but I'm not sure that I've got the votes to do that, so, without having the infrastructure really completed. And that's really where I'm sticking on the infrastructure side of it. And it's not all your guys' responsibility, and so I apologize for that. But it is, it is brought to light more issues that we have as a city and a community than really just Colorado and Quartzon. Go ahead.
Mayor, is there something that this property owner can do for this project that would make it palatable for the council to support it, to move forward?
Help us build Colorado Road. I think that's an unreasonable.
I think Colorado is built. Oh, you mean to the south, up to Quartzon. Help us, help you build Colorado all the way down to Cottonwood.
And that's, I think that's too big of an ask. You know, I don't think that's fair. It's not fair to the developer. And I say, I say that tongue-in-cheek when I say help us build it.
I guess I would pose the question to the council, is there something that this property owner can do to make this palatable for the council to support this site plan application?
Go ahead.
Without the infrastructure in place, we still have the same issue, same problem. We have to have the infrastructure in place in order to port the work right. And I'll just say for myself, Planning and Zoning did a good job with this because it brought attention to an area that needs to be rectified. It wouldn't make any sense for us to allow this to happen and then what we're going to do, we're going to hear the complaints from all the people that's telling us that Traffic Jam is still trapped there, we built that place, we were against it and things like that. So if we have the infrastructure in place, I believe it'd make it more palatable then, it'd be easy then even for you all. And I believe our citizens would be happy. I believe we would be a much better community with Pert Road fixed right, with Quartzon fixed right. Because I believe you brought up something earlier, you mentioned something about the housing development off of Cottonwood Lane and Pert. And I believe someone mentioned about this as well. There's four lanes and a turny lane. Just imagine that over at Quartzon and Pert. That's going to work better. And also, the four lanes going down Quartzon west of Pert as well, that's going to help out the residents that's going to be coming out of the development that you're talking about off of Colorado, because now we have the infrastructure in place. And I believe that that's where we're at now, is just having it, having the infrastructure in place that just makes it a better or smoother transition. And so I'm in agreement with our planning and zoning.
Go ahead.
I just have some general comments on this. You know, when we talked about the major site plan, there was 18 different things that are on here. And I really do thank the developer and the property owner because there was two things that stood out in this. The 18 that we talked about, there's only two that I questioned, but those are big questions. And the planning and zoning did a good job and these are volunteers who take their jobs seriously, and I thank them for that. I know that we have a couple in the room. I know the staff has done their due diligence on this. I know that for me, I was not sure walking in here tonight. You know, I've read everything, I've dissected this, and listening to our community, one of the things that stood out to me early on was the traffic. But I did not realize, because I don't live in your area, I did not realize the impact of the schools that were going through your neighborhood. And do we have things that we need to improve on as a city? Absolutely, we do. Do we need to take responsibility in that? Absolutely, we do. But this piece of the puzzle is broken tonight for me, and I just can't move forward on this.
I do want to also mention, we did have a couple of people in support of this, so that we did get communications from. So, and they do live in G Diamond Ranch, so I just wanted to make that public. And it's been, it's been recorded, so. Any other comments from Lisa?
Well, and obviously, this is a difficult decision. Even coming in, I wasn't quite sure, but reading through all it, listening to everyone, and I, I do believe in the process. I'm, I'm happy to see that, you know, that we had the two public hearings and the input. I think Planning and Zoning did a good job listening to the neighbors. You know, I'm not necessarily against this project and I'm not against apartments. I think that our community needs apartments. You know, we, you know, I have young adults, you know, children that can't afford houses right now, and I don't think apartments necessarily bring 100% bad, you know, to those developments. There's good, hard-working people that live in them, so I'm not against apartments. However, I, I'm worried about the timing of this because of the, because of the traffic. You know, when, you know, we, and I value the traffic engineers, I have one in my family, and he's a traffic nerd, really. But, you know, I value what you do and, and, but we are all living this every day. And so it's difficult to, you know, focus on this study that's telling us this, but living it every day, these are real issues. And we know we have issues on Pier and Quartzon. It's not fair for the developer, like you said, Mayor, to take on all these expenses, you know, I mean, the infrastructure improvements. And so we, as a city, really need to evaluate, you know, where we are, you know, you know, in our budget process, the CIP process, the budget process, what are we going to do? Because this is, this is not just this area, guys, this is all over our city. We know we have an issue with our streets, our roads, our traffic. And so what are we going to do to make sure that infrastructure is in place so these developers can come in and be successful and it's safe? So I just worry that under the current traffic conditions, that I, I'm afraid that I don't think this is the right time, that we, we need to make these improvements and make it safe. And, you know, we're listening to the public, you know, and it's not just the G Diamond Ranch. I've gotten calls from people outside of G Diamond Ranch that drive through that area every day also. So, but again, I, you know, I'm not against apartments. Obviously, we need to look and see what our, what our inventory is, what our product mix is, where, you know, compatibility is very, very important. So, but at this time, this, that's the thing that concerns me at this time.
Bob?
Another clarification, is there a cause on this property? Okay. So that greatly limits what the developer is able to do. I think I heard a lot of people mention the deed restriction that came and went, and that really bothers me. Most traffic issues can be mitigated in the planning process or will be mitigated as time goes on, as different development comes in and different sections of roadway are cleared up. So I'm not that concerned with the traffic. I think it'll address itself in time. But it does bother me that a number of residents had this deed restriction given to them in some capacity, and I know residents depend on that. I mean, they buy a house and they're, they're counting on raising their family and living in that house for years to come, not, not just the next couple of years.
Bob, deed restriction?
I understand, and I'm not advocating that, but I think it was brought up so many times.
It's not something we can consider in the decision here.
And, and I'm, I don't think I am. I think I'm simply listening to the comments and, anyway, because of the overall displeasure of the, of the group that's here tonight, I think I'm going to lean towards voting no on it.
All right. So I need a motion from somebody to consider approval or denial of item L1.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we deny the major site plan lost at G Diamond as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
So clarification, a yes is denial, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Since that's the motion.
Yep.
Count, excuse me, Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember Huddleston?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Edwards?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. We moved the reports. So I'm gonna move reports up here just before the exec session that we're gonna move into. So Bob, you wanna go first?
Mine's easy. No report, Mayor. I've been out of town for two weeks.
There you go. Lisa?
You know, a couple of things. Wanted to thank everyone in the community, our police department, everyone that participated in the point and time count last week. You know, everyone getting out there, our homeless. The street fair was a great event, even though there was rain that came in. But I think everyone really enjoyed that. The Faith Alliance on February 15th, Chief McCrory and Chief Laos are coming in to talk to our, our church community, just about, you know, climate activity and how the churches can get involved. So February 15th, if anyone wants to come see the chief, it'll be at the LDS Church on, what street is that over there? By Mesquite School, Colorado. Caesar Chavez, there's a lot of scholarships and several of us are on different committees. The Caesar Chavez Scholarship for this high school seniors, March 8th is the deadline to be emailed and postmarked by the 6th. And, and finally, I just wanted to congratulate, we went to the, the Police Department Awards. And I just wanted to congratulate, you know, our fine men and women. All the men were awarded this time, but obviously, we have some great women there too. But, you know, Sammy Guzman was awarded the civilian of the year. Alex, what is it? Hambaum received the Tate, Tate Lynch Service Award. Brian Martinez, Robert Price, Jacob Robinson, special contribution to the agency. Richard Rush was the supervisor of the year. And finally, the officer of the, of the year was Jeremy Yvara. So, you know, we just have some great people in our police department. And I'm, I'm so sad to see that you honored tho, those people at that event. And I was happy to be there. That's it for me, Mayor.
Anthony?
No report.
Matt?
Of course. The Youth Commission was here earlier. You guys missed it. It was a lot more fun. And they were talking about their, their biannual, twice a year, yes, paper shredding. They failed to mention that it's gonna be on April 20th this year at the First American Credit Union from 9:00 to 12:00, which we'll have more publicity about. So we just got confirmation on that. They did talk about their trip to Washington DC, what they're excited about. And on a, a more serious note, I don't know if a lot of people know, but we've been getting, the AZDMA was transporting people from Mexico that were dropped off here, or immigrants. I don't know where they were from. We can't say where, I mean, we don't know where they're from, but asylum seekers.
Asylum seekers.
Asylum seekers, thank you. In Casa Grande. And they stopped funding that for us for a time. So the city stepped up. We were paying for a bus, just so people know. And in addition to paying for it, there's people in our community really volunteering to do this as well. Public Works helped out a lot, the LDS Church, non-sworn personnel from the police department, as well as I know that Deputy Chief Laos is a big part of this. So thank him, chief, for really taking, you know, for stepping up on this. And then we got the good news that AZDMA is restoring our funding. So we're not paying for it as a city anymore. And they're helping us do that, just so you guys know what's going on for the asylum seekers in Casa Grande. So we're taking them to a place where they can get help and have the services that they need. So, because I get asked that a lot from people. So I just wanted to let everybody know.
Donna?
And I, I was gonna mention that. And I think to date, we've had 20,000 asylum seekers come through Casa Grande. Not sure if people know that. So Chief Laos has done a good job. I do want to mention, we have a board of adjustment opening and the 23rd is the deadline for that. So we need citizens to step up. We have some great citizens here tonight. So if you're interested, please go onto our website. I do wanna, Lisa had mentioned the point and time. I do wanna just call out Yost Remaxrillity. They put together a drive, a coat drive, and I picked up over 100 coats that we were able to distribute that day. And so that was what we call community in action. We had backup coffee with a cop is back up. So that was really nice. And as Lisa mentioned, the policeman quote was great. The Leadership Academy is starting this Wednesday. So we're excited about that. And then also, the city cleanup is the 30th of March. So please mark your calendars. We expect to see you all out there as well. And that's it.
All right. I have a couple of announcements. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
I think, I think you and I communicated silently that I am the reporter, rather than thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Jeff. So are you done?
Seriously, I was gonna say...
All right. All right. Well, first of all, a couple of things that are coming up. We've got Night of the Stars for CAC is gonna be out in, at the Maricopa. They're doing it in Maricopa this year. And that is on February 9th. So if you're interested in helping raise some funds for CAC, go to their website. I'm sure that, I know they have information on it. And then the plein air awards for the art, which is art competition that the museum puts on, or museum puts on, or you guys put it on?
Arts and humanities.
Arts and humanities. And it's at the museum.
Yes.
So I know there's a connection there somewhere.
The museum.
And that's on March 30th. Artist registrations in the morning, and then they paint, and then they have a little art sale, and then there's free hot dogs and stuff. But don't forget to come to Dave White because on March 30th, we also have the Taco Fest.
After the plein air.
So you can do the plein air in the morning, Taco Fest in the afternoon. Come see...
Roger Klein and the Peacemakers.
There you go. Roger Klein. It's $10. It's cheap. And Roger Klein and the Peacemakers will be there rocking Dave White. And then in March, we're gonna, we're gonna light up the city red, right, Larry, in honor of the Red Cross Month? So if you see the city hall red, then you'll know what that's for. It's for the, it's Red Cross Month. So in honor of that, maybe make a donation to the Red Cross. So they do some good work. And then I think that's about all I've got. So I wanna leave it at that. Phoenix Open starts this week, if anybody's interested. And I think that's it. We have flag raising at Rodeo Park on Saturday. If anybody wants to come, I could talk all night. That's it. Nine, no, 10 o'clock, 10 o'clock at where, where the flags are in Rodeo Park. We're gonna be dedicating the, the flag poles and, and stuff. So that'd be a nice ceremony. It's the Veterans Memorial. Yeah. Okay. That's it. Thank you, everybody.
Executive session.
Move, move to, move to executive session.
Yeah, a motion and a second to go to executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And, and just one clarification, Mayor. We did have two items on for executive session tonight. Because you have already voted on one, we will only be in executive session on the Valdez time.
Right. Okay. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.